Call order July fifteenth. Meeting. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Here.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Commissioner Rondo?
Here.
Commissioner Seaver?
Here. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Read public comment, Ryan, got anything?
Um, I was just hanging around for the airport portion.
Okay. Agenda. Everybody will queue the agenda.
Did not see anything.
Good.
Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second, that's.
All right is. All right. We do that.
For that one, we've got to work.
Consent agenda, anybody got any questions on any of them? A through M.
Oh, good.
Will you approve the consent agenda?
I'll support.
Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Minutes, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Any corrections?
No, but I saw.
Right. They were from April.
There's the correction.
I'm like, wait a second. But I was like, oh, it's good. Another one of those copy and paste.
Not even one off, you're too much.
Two in a row.
The ones from June, I did look over and they looked good.
June tenth and seventeenth. Did we get motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from June.
Second. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Number eight, payroll check adjustment to use the termination fund for Patrick Mellon to pay out those eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars and sixteen cents.
Previously paid out by jail budgets, now we have a termination fund, so.
The termination fund is new?
What's the change here? So, we took that all of this payment out of jail, but we budgeted this eighty-three forty in termination fund to use for this exact scenario, and we didn't, so we could save the general fund.
The general fund.
Eight thousand three hundred and forty.
We purchased this year, started doing termination funds, because we knew people were going to retire, so it's like we gotta start putting money in there.
Got a chunk of money from something that, yeah, was like, you know, that'd be a good spot for it.
Okay.
How much is in the termination fund?
That'll drain it.
Nobody else can retire from that year.
Nobody else can leave.
But it was part of the plan to.
Yeah, I remember now, pulled it in the jail after a little bit.
Okay.
So we should take it out of there and put it back in jail?
Yeah, do a payroll adjustments, or it takes care of the taxes and everything. If we can just do a motion to do that, since originally the motion was to pay it out of jail.
Alright, so we need to make a motion to make the adjustment from termination fund to the jail budget.
Second. Full call. Is that the right way?
Mm-hmm, it's gonna be a payroll adjustment to use the termination fund to repay the jail.
We have it in the termination fund right now.
But you're taking it from the termination fund and
Putting it back.
Putting it into the jail budget.
Yeah, it's gonna pay it back, yeah.
That's where it was taken.
That's what you're doing.
Yeah.
Any questions? Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. And Ryan, who's Michigan State subdivision agreement for college settlements? Questions on that?
I do have a question. How come, how come it's Michigan State, not State of Michigan? It's not the university, is it?
Michigan State subdivision, it's.
Michigan State subdivision.
They could've said State of Michigan, State subdivision, but it's.
I was just asking the question because I don't know what Kroger had to do with Michigan State University.
Walmart was selling some narcotics.
No, but it's the old you.
Litigation? Their pharmacies were part of the litigation.
Okay, but it's the State of Michigan.
Yes, oh, yeah, so I don't know if I included the breakdown of all the.
Oh, I just.
No, it's not the university, it's the State of Michigan, State subdivision, so. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Full call. Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yep.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Number ten, authorize the clerk's design for this and the release form.
Make a motion to authorize the clerk's design.
All for. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. When we're ten, helping board the canvassers appointments, we had.
Two resignations, so we have.
You know.
So I spoke to all parties, I sent out to the state um, chair, state Republican Party Chair, no response, reached out to the remaining members of the Elder County Republican uh, party, and got to go ahead to advertise that ran through last Friday, the only two letters of interest I got are in the packet. And we have two open seats, I reached out to Rita and asked her which one she would want, so she took the, basically just taking their old spots back. We have any other questions? We don't really have a protocol for this one. Just uh, back where it was previously.
So, just make a motion to accept.
The appointments, except the appointments as presented?
I'll support that.
All favor? Uh, full call, can I do a full call on that?
Correctly.
Full call. Can I call off table then? Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Twelve. Thus airport use policy regarding operation usage. You're up, Mike.
I uh, I would like to see, make sure the airport can stay, uh, stand on its own, and they don't have to come back from the county or the uh, or the folders for a millage, because out our way, I don't think it would pass, and I'm wondering what in the next five years is the, is the airport committee going to do to assure this? Yeah, when I was on the committee, we had a five-year plan, and I, I would like to see the uh airport part of that, the runway and that be fenced off, so that the people of Elder County could use the other part of the uh, land out there, and not just the people that are flying planes. Uh, they're, they're paying for that property, it took us about ten years to get that property in the county name, and uh I would like to see uh, that it's, that they're able to maintain and keep that without funding from the county. And I'd like to know what, what they're going to do, or have, have at least make some kind of a plan for that.
The one I don't know, putting a fence in there would break the county.
Yeah. That's why we don't.
We, we had her, we had a, uh, we could've got a, at that time, we could've got a grant for that for that, um, actually, the, the uh, manager of the uh, Luce County Airport, Dan Ellis, um, that was a grant to put their fence around their whole airport.
Well. Some of them do, I know we've been a part of them.
But I'm, I'm not, I would like to see a grant so that, that, and just the pilots that fly in there only get to use the airport, that's not right. That should be the people of the county, for the bike path in there, do whatever you want, but it should be open to the people of our county. I don't know how many, what kind of, yeah, when I park my car at, when I go to Florida, I park my car in air, the airport in Appleton, it costs me seven dollars a day to park my car there, so we should be charging people who park their airplane. My opinion, that's, that's all, I'd just like to see that they would be able to stand on their own and not in three, four years need a millage. Or something like that.
I don't think a millage would pass, that's why I think the.
No, that's why I wanted to do it now.
Push right now is they are, in my eyes, that they're doing really well on trying to get it up and going, and those last weekend were very impressive.
I was just gonna say, I know that we have discussed how, once we get the airport itself standing and everything's working well-oiled machine, that the talk of a dog park up there was optional, um, that there is the trail that the bike people are putting up there, so we have in the plan to make it more accessible in certain parts of it to the public, but right now, the main focus is, I guess, to make sure that we have a well-oiled machine of an air strip, and make sure that's going, and get all those taken care of before we start the next step, so I guess if you said there was a five-year plan, maybe that's, you know, two years into our plan, that's the next step, maybe.
And Mike, I think you could answer this best, um, when we went down to
With the basic utility.
Basic, yeah, from general, we don't really have to have a fence to separate things, I don't believe, do we?
We do not, we do not have to have a fence.
Cause you put up a fence is one thing, get paid for it, then we have to still maintain it.
You know, and that's.
That's where the price comes, with our snow fences do, but I mean, that's all possibilities.
Right, and then, you know, you gotta remember with grants come strings. Yeah. Like those fence grants, I think the last one was, had to commit to maintain it for thirty years, so if it broke, you had to fix it, or they want all their money back.
And I believe we had to go back up to general to get, there'd be a.
Yeah, we would have to go, for a lot of those grants, especially anything from the feds to the FAA, we would have to bump back up to general, which then requires us to light our fields.
Yeah.
So, the last estimate on that was about a million dollars, rewire, rerun all the lighting.
I'll ask, how long has the county owned their part?
When, when was the swap finalized?
That was only five years?
Eighteen, six years, five, six years.
I think so, five years. And when did we cut the logs?
Four years ago.
Okay, well, that, well, I was just trying to put in a perspective of what the taxpayers have, it's caused the taxpayers, because since we cut the logs, we've maintained, right, and then anything forward, we have.
The log cutting paid back the county.
Five years previous.
Paid part of it back.
Yeah.
Five years previous, from when they made the deal.
Yeah, so, I'm just putting it in perspective that it hasn't cost the taxpayers anything up until now.
Correct.
Yes, and that's where we're maintaining, is that what we're doing for the man, the airport, the events that will happen, like this past weekend, and the donations and all that.
The uh, it did have, way back when in the old policy, I don't remember for sure off the top of my head, and I couldn't find the, the whole policy, it was a dollar, two dollars a day for overnight tie-downs. You know. Even, I went through the log last night, we had thirty planes registered over the weekend, you know, some of those were here multiple nights, you know, so you're talking sixty or seventy bucks tops, uh, cash donations were brought in two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Plus, there's been already at least one electronic donation from it of a hundred and fifty dollars that, that money would get transferred in first of the month, so on that aspect of it, we're ahead of the game with the donations versus those, the very minimal fees that would get charged.
Putting a fee, minimal fee on everything, just.
Yeah, as far as, you know, breaking up the property, you know, that's the biggest thing we have going for us to help fund it in the future, is we have the property to it's been a long road, we're still trying to figure out how to go about putting up, letting folks put up hangar space, or storing aircraft, possibility of hangar space for maintenance, for teaching, things like that, you know, especially if we get, we've got someone that is interested in possibly doing some air tours. Uh, so we're trying to work real hard to get, figure out a way to get her some space, so we can sit down with her and come up with a deal, because that would be a commercial use, so we would have to come to an agreement with her on, if it's tours, and myself and Ryan, she had a really good discussion a couple of weeks ago about that, and, you know, she agrees that, you know, basically a percentage would be the fair thing, we just have to sit down and figure out what that percentage of each trip would be.
Yeah.
So, so those are some of the things that we've been working on towards, you know, the self, the self-sustaining, and then uh you know, yeah, there was fifty-one kids Saturday, the gut flights for free.
What's the holdup right now on getting laws marked out for leasing for hangers?
Well, the mechanism of the lease, the old traditional, long-term, be they thirty, fifty, ninety-nine year leases, where the property then reverts back to the county at the end of the lease, and financial institutions won't loan money on those anymore. So guys have to dig in their own pocket if they want, you know, if they wanna build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar hangar, they gotta dig in their pocket, try and find a hundred and fifty, they can't go to the bank and get it, um, so trying to work, we'll sit down with one of the lawyers that has worked on some of this stuff for us before, and see what we can come up with, just to give some of that, like, or lease options. Selling is gonna be even tougher, because then we're gonna end up spending six months or better, dealing with zoning with the town.
Well, I, I mean, just me personally, I would not, you know.
I talked about it.
I won't sell county power, so.
I just, I, I'm not picking on these, I just, I just wanted to see that, that they'll be able to sustain, be able to, you know what I mean? Yep, and we're, and as far as, and we're trying to make it beneficial for everyone, uh, also part of Saturday's event was announced, uh, by this fall, there will be in place some scholarships, one for a student from the munisum schools, and one for a student from the Superior Central Schools. Those scholarships will be specifically for them to obtain their pilot's license. So if we get a kid that's interested in aviation, they wanna try and encourage that, help them along, and, you know, all of a sudden. The more that's going on, the more people come, the more we bring in.
Well, I, I don't, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to answer your questions. Catch where you're, I just wanted to be sustainable for, for, forever.
And that is the goal. And this.
Is there, you know, because it's in Elder County, and this is, maybe Ryan would know, do they make a plane su- uh, suitable for hauling patients, or, you know, is there something like that in UP? I know they're using, you know.
Iron Mountain, they use PC twelves, platters PC twelves, that can land here, most of those companies that currently run them require a pay of runway for insurance purposes.
Yeah.
But they are more than capable of landing on a grassed replica hill.
Yeah, and, and where I'm going with this is, is, you know, to give something back to, to the residents in Elder County, is, is, as far as if that's even doable for emergency lift, you know, or something, I don't know, you know.
See, Newberry, Newberry's Airport rents the property out to the potato farmer there, I don't, I told you guys that before. And they, and they said they make all kinds of, that's Dan Ellis, that they make all kinds of money with that. Plus, and they got, uh, with the feds, they've got a, uh, open their budget, because they're have fixed wing air, aircraft that can fly over Lake Michigan, they don't want like a helicopter, it has to be a, a fixed winged aircraft, and they got that grant for I don't know how many years they got.
Wow.
But I, all I'd like to do is, before you get into a problem, or you're gonna have to look for a millage, or something like that, that, that you're you know, you see what I'm saying, I, I'm not picking on any.
Nope, nope, and there are, wheels are turning to get things like that going.
I think what's, what they have in element, with down to basic, are costs are so low, yeah, we're, me and Joe talking about that yesterday or something, very positive, that is so low, that, you know, they're taking care of it, they're doing all the mowing and stuff like that, so.
And we should be able to knock that down a little more next year, um, talked to a couple of gentlemen from the recreational aviation foundation, and they're pretty sure we're paying too much for our liability insurance as well. So they've made it out of national organization that
Looks at all those things.
That does specifics, so they're gonna look into that for us, see if they can't get that knocked down for us, too, to help. That's, that's our single biggest bill, that was just over thirty-one hundred dollars this year, for a year's insurance, so.
And you have a little bit of fuel for the crackers, if that's even getting charged?
Nope, we don't pay for fuel for the.
Yeah, and then you have.
It's all donated right now.
Oh, yeah, it's eat some lights.
Eat light and internet, yeah.
So that comes out of the airport, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many, how many feet are they putting in, uh, is it the spring of cement?
Runway, you tell me, cause I. We, we got a lot of feet of, of fiber optic cable put in, so. And that was all through donation by our local provider.
We don't need any motions on that or anything, right?
No, it's, that's fine. I could try and answer. Any other questions?
Yeah, is there any instructors out there that, I mean, I had somebody ask me, there's a guy that needed forty hours of training.
Yeah, I do happen to know one.
Do you?
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to get her over here. It's the same lady, the same lady, she lives in Nugent Lake.
Oh, yes.
She's a, not only a, a lot of an extreme amount of hours.
Yeah.
She's also a mechanic licensed aviation mechanic, and instructor of very many, many things that we can instruct on, so, yeah.
Teach you.
We're working on it.
Yeah.
No, dig in hard.
She's, she's, I'm just my drone. She's had some meetings with a couple of the other counties not liking what she's been hearing and doing. We're a lot closer to home.
All right, number thirteen. Yes, clean up our website, get rid of anything non-governmental, affiliated links.
This went through committee, I forgot to put it on the agenda.
The last one?
No, last meeting. So, initially, when I was just doing the website, if people requested it, I just kinda threw it on, it made some sense, but, you know, these highlighted ones are all the ones that are not technically. They may be non, no, they're definitely not affiliated with us in any kind of governmental capacity, so, in order for the dot gov compliance, we really shouldn't have any advertised, and I wouldn't consider some of the advertised ones. Anything that are safe and sorry, just get rid of the ones that aren't.
Yeah.
Go for it, we need a motion, make a motion to all. Remove links that are non-governmental from our site.
Second. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Number fourteen, discuss authorizing payments to the Elder County Fair Board and the mall of seven hundred and fifty dollars, so you really donation?
It's in the budget.
I'll make a motion to give that money to the Fair Board.
I'll support. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Fifteen. Court staff, come on, cut. Questions?
I got one. Is it all there?
It's been bouncing around for a while. I read every word of it. Yeah, Christie, okay, it's a few things we talked about.
I bring up one thing, what was that? So much for honor, you guys are.
The only thing, the D, that starts with D, this, what the heck was it you brought up in that meeting, didn't you?
Yeah.
The differential.
Shifter credential, that's.
No, it was something.
Deferred cop? It was a lot of these, I, I said you got it.
It was in one, but not the other.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we cleaned up those, so that's what I'm saying, Christie, okay, those, yeah, those three tweaks. After, they were, they were just the minor language things, which is.
Yeah.
I mean.
Discussion, any more discussion on it? We got a motion?
Motion to accept the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six contracts.
I'll second that. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, for sixteen, and then the other one, that court holds employees. Any discussion on that one?
Okay.
You have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Full call.
Commissioner Caprosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Milton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Because even ideas, way to make more money.
Think it would be time to look at the fee schedule every soon. Bring it up in committee.
You thought the Elder County and State?
Any unfinished business?
I have a question on unfinished business.
Do we have any unfinished business?
Well, we, we had the, the housing project. It seemed like it was making some progress.
No, we're waiting.
There's seventeen people that, there's a waiting list of seventeen people in Grand Rapids for Halloween.
Really? We got, did we ever get back with the, we got plans or?
Our meeting is July thirtieth.
July thirty?
Well, that's on one thing.
That's on the music market. Okay, but on the other one, um, he just sent me the agreement to sign, but I wanted to bring it to Land Bank on Wednesday.
Right.
Very close, and so, as we have, we have to go back, we'll go forward with that thing.
Nice. Yeah, housing, uh, we have some people in Grand Rapids, been looking, munising, manatee, they're pretty desperate.
Any other unfinished business, Joe? Any resolutions? Committee reports.
No.
Uh, first annual Hamley Field Day was a very good success, uh, hit pretty much where, where we expected, uh, fifty-one kids received rides. Uh, we had right around thirty different aircraft present, so, and about six of those were actually given rides, I mean, but we still had, we had guys that flew in. A guy flew in from Indiana, stayed Thursday and Friday night, worked, I don't know, eight, nine hours on Saturday helping with everything, and they got his plane and went home. You know, so, I had a lot of that, too, a lot of them came work, you know, just escorting kids around, making sure that they weren't going where they shouldn't go, and walk, you know, we walk in front of propellers, or a lot of our guys, yeah, this amount of volunteer effort that went in was just outstanding. Lots of happy, smiley kids from as far away as San Antonio, Texas, apparently, there was two kids.
Oh, cause they doesn't.
Exactly, okay, and somebody had to be here visiting, visiting relatives, so, those are the, those are the two from farthest away. Lots from, we had.
With all my parents, with my uncle.
Right, which, which, the fact we had the high-speed internet, allowed them to actually, because they had to have a waiver from their parents. So with the high-speed internet there, the FAA folks running the event. So with the high speed internet there, the E A folks running the event were able to. Zip it right down, had it back in just a minute or two and. No interruption, the kids got to go fly. So, yeah, a lot of kids and three or four families asked me, when is it next year? So. Hopefully, we can add to it a little bit each year and make it a little bit bigger event and. We have lots of, quite a few locals that came by just because they saw the planes, just to see the planes. All the pilots were more than happy and friendly. Showing people around the planes, we had. All kinds of. From amphibious planes to float planes to. Ryan laughs at me because. I don't know, I just call them go fast planes. Little ones that just go fast and tricks. Yeah, all kinds. Also, it was really nice to see and. All the community members that stopped and or and or brought kids were all very supportive and. Yeah, look forward to lots and lots of compliments on. Pilot songs from pilots and their families that came in, so you know, most places. You were lucky if there's a a light in a coffee pot. So, especially on that hot day, yeah, that air conditioning paid off, so. Cause it was hot up there. Big thanks to all of our partners in that, so. Not possible without them, so. Thank you.
I didn't have any committees. I have two um. Fair boards. And it's kind of up in the air whether they allow to have chickens at their uh fairs. And the number of uh lactating dairy cows, they kind of cutting them out of there. So I think uh. The Elder Fair won't have the chicken auction. But I'm not sure. Well, it's because of the Department of Agriculture, but they will have the chicken rotisserie.
We're still wanting to eat them, right?
Up to uh Elder Fair is uh laser bag this year. Okay, for kids.
No paintball, just laser.
Laser. Paintballs would be great, Dave.
The liability insurance is too.
And that, uh, I was happy, yeah. Uh, road commission meeting, I told you they've. Kind of come to a decision with the state on the snowmobile trail.
Well, we toast you, David.
Yeah, well. We'll see.
What what was that?
They're going to go, see, they've contact contracted to do the paving across that bridge. And they're going to, there's something they put in the pavement to make it harder. But uh. Every six months, the the D N R has to come out and meet with them to make sure that it's what it's supposed to be. And uh. After, I think after five years, they or ten years, they have to have ultimate route, get off the road.
So we're giving them another.
Well, actually, yeah, another ten years, it was twelve before. Not, it's not good to have on the road there.
Could they widen the road? Distance bonds.
With wetlands on both sides.
Yeah.
Well, that's why they can't find the road.
Yeah.
Well, they had, they had a chance to buy it, they say about eight years ago. And the D N R didn't buy it. But that's all I got.
No committees, man, all Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday. Got about five of them coming up.
Any correspondence? Or comments?
Um, on the airport thing, sorry, I did not make it up there. Small children were not having it on that day and seeing that my eight year old is from Kentucky, nobody was flying, um, but. I paid attention and I. If anybody didn't already know, Ryan, your local, obviously from the area, but I loved seeing that the tester boys were up there, Adam and Gordon. Um, I know for a fact, you know, Adam learned all about planes up there. He got all these hours while we were in high school, so it was really great to see people who don't even live here anymore, grow up here, come back and do that event. So I know that it's a ton of fun, Adam loves flying. He made a career out of it, so I, it was great to see even just even that part of it. To see some of our locals come back and do this for the kids and now the scholarships, that's that's amazing, so. Just a pet on everybody's back for doing all they are doing up there.
Hey, yeah, I my comment is I'm glad to hear your, what you're doing. A friend of mine was used to be on this board, fought for about ten years, ten, fifteen years to get that airport and earn it and. Discount. And I certainly hate to see it not being able to sustain itself. And it sounds like you guys are doing a pretty good job and I appreciate that, but it was a long fight, yeah, I hope you know that.
It it wasn't even the first time they tried to do it.
No, no.
And it's really great that you guys had fifty one kids.
Yeah.
I did notice when I was online for the registration, they had one going in Escanaba. And they only had thirty three registered when I looked that morning. Um, I love that it last year was kind of last minute, you didn't have as much and the same amount of kids, so. As long as it didn't decline and we're next year.
You did by one. Technically, we have, we have numbers still, we have fifty two left.
I'll tell you what, if.
We had five no shows, so.
If you went five years, if you did five years enough, you probably would have had about seventy more kids pop on those. But yes, eight's fine, I'm just saying. It's it's great to see that many kids still came.
Comments?
I just did.
You couldn't see it, thirteen, now you can't hear it.
So I thought you had a different comment, but.
What are we gonna do for you?
Send me on my way.
Bring you to the only way a copper room that the spirit hotel for a while.
No phones?
No TV, no phone.
I am.
You can cast from the room to the bed.
That might take you on that house.
Oh, we had a good fourth of July, let's save.
Wet.
Wet, but not on fourth though.
No, no. I don't know what do you, all the Grand Ray had to parade on the trail.
They got wet.
Let everybody have fun.
Yeah, just again, you know, like I said, without. The the E A guys that actually sponsor the event, they can't, they're. So excited to come back again next year, they said this is turning into their favorite. You know, just the whole, the way the community supports that the kids come out and it's just, so it's just. A lot of fun for them, so and and they're the ones that are putting in the, you know. They pay for their own fuel, they're on their own time, you know, they they're just doing it for the love of. The love of flying and to maybe get a kid interested in some kind of, you know, be it flying, be it. Maintenance, you know, the aviation industry screaming for everything. They need everybody, so, yeah. You know? Those are some pretty good paying jobs usually, so. Yeah, those scholarships, those are gonna be huge to. You know, let those kids have that opportunity, so. Just grateful for all the community support, like I said, I'm not even gonna try and list them off, because there's just way too many.
Staff lines?
Joe? Um, I saw Neil, he stepped in the office just for similar stuff, he said thank you for the cement. Looks good, we used it today, he was gonna write a letter just in the off chance he doesn't or get to it, he could say thank you. Okay, and then I have election train starting Wednesday and then again next Wednesday, so. Then this room will transform into our early voting center. Watch out for that. I guess since we're talking about the airport, I'm up there quite a bit too because of our rescue building. And uh, I mean, it's it's the the nicest runway by far it has been. Um, you know. Ten years ago, if you would have asked me about our airport, I wasn't a huge fan of it, um, I am now. You know, and having Ryan on our rescue team, you know, it's it's huge for Elder County people. And the people that visit Elder County, just uh, it maybe the board knows, but uh. Here, a couple of weeks ago, um, we got an I one one call that somebody heard somebody screaming for help and a jet ski. Flop uh flipped over upside down. It was from the Holiday Inn Express up on the hill. So, long story short. Call went out to Ryan, he said, yeah, um, I can certainly respond, it was a beautiful day, it was flat, we had our boat out there. Coast Guard was coming down from Marquette. And then uh Ryan needed a a spotter and he probably picked the best spotter there was, it was me. But anyway, I mean, we were in the air within a half an hour. And we covered such an area, I mean, we didn't find a jet ski or anything, but uh, it's it's huge to have. That as far as our rescue team, as far as search and rescue, you know, it's gonna save a life one day as far as locating somebody, so. We really appreciated that, so. Anyway, this will put on the airport.
Did you guys have uh the rescue area open for the kids to look at stuff?
Oh yeah, yeah, it was all cleaned up, doors are open, um, yeah, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was nice to have that too on a hot day, but. A little bit.
I didn't hear you were squirming a little bit in that plane?
I was, you know. It's not the biggest plane in the world and getting in it was it was okay, but you know, these doors just latch, but it's a little latch and. We're like this and Ryan had me just like this, I'm looking straight down, I had to ask him, hey, is this door gonna open? He says, ah, your safety harness will hold you in.
Is that when you clicked it on?
Oh, no. But uh, yeah, just 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 having that access uh for our people in Elder County and the visitors, it's a huge asset. You know, so and when we landed, very smooth. So, runway's in great shape too.
Public comment?
Oh, my comment, can the microphone pick me up from here?
Yeah.
Okay.
The audience sees pretty well.
Um, just some notes on some of the ideas, so. Time of grant money, right? So that's, I believe, National Plan for Integrated Aviation Airport Systems. From the FAA, to do that, you need an airport plan. Airport plan costs about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, ten percent can be paid by the county with rest being covered by the federal government. If you do a thirty year plan or thirty year agreement to follow the plan. Another five percent would be carved by the state, so at minimum, they're gonna be paying twenty thousand dollars just to get in the door. And then have to pay ten percent of everything on top of that. So if you're paying twenty thousand dollars for the plan and then to get a fence around that, I think was also quoted at. Between five hundred and fifty and like one point one million, depending on what you get. Um, you're talking very large sums of money to do that. Um, on top of that, airports typically with revenue tie downs, scare people away, tie down fees. If you wanna scare people out from going there, you won't make money doing tie down fees. Uh, hangar fees are about the only way you get money at an airport like that or fuel, we don't have the money to do a fuel system. Hangar fees are probably the way to go. Uh, that and donations, you make the airport nice in someplace people wanna travel. People donate money, especially the rental cars up there now. People pitch in for that relatively frequently too, so and we have a box now too, which helps uh quite a bit. Um, we are obviously been working on other stuff too, like connecting the pine loop. For the Music Bay Trail Network up there for bicyclists, uh, like dog area, whatever, we talked about that. There's some insurance issues with that, we're working through, it might move like a walking path that allows dogs if they're, you know. Under control, um. Newbury does do the farming thing and I think that's a good idea, but before that, there probably should be a plan on where you're actually. Putting in, you know, someone's doing lease hangers or whatever, where those are going out, but that's probably something needs to be planned out. Um, but yeah, I mean, right now, with my hangar rental, I'm providing twenty four hundred dollars. In a year. Um, and the grass cutting money is gone, so basically my hangar is covering the insurance. You're not paying fuel, so it's pretty much down to electricity, phone and internet now. Um, but as far as concerns, I guess, going forward, my only thing is. Been a lot of bad information floating around about the airport over the last, well, really long time and someone that's been pretty closely involved in the aviation industry for. Over a decade now and flying in the Marine Corps. Um, all I ask is just, before you start spreading stuff, know what you're talking about, like actually have the info, so.
I don't know anybody spreading anything.
Well, not not you per se, but Latch, you were talking, oh, we're gonna pave it and there's gonna be a millage. People were saying a lot of things that were not even remotely close to truth. So that's the.
I think I fixed that.
It it was, but I'm just trying to prevent it from happening again.
I don't think, yeah.
But I I just wanted to know that it'll be.
Oh, I understand, I'm not, that wasn't directed, that was directed at the wider like, I'm trying not to go back to the paved.
Yeah.
Uh, in all those comments. So, because when you were talking millage, okay, well, the airport right now, after my hangar rent is probably going to be. Short like twelve hundred dollars, we just got close to four fifty in a day on donations. So now we're talking a couple hundred dollars, I don't think you're gonna need a millage for that. Is what I'm getting at.
That was that survey that went into the packet, people took.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Hi, guys, welcome up close, I didn't want to disrupt the rest of the meeting, so, um. I was just thinking about bringing this up under cost saving revenue, but I don't have a way to get that far without bringing up something else first, so. Um, last Wednesday, another state trooper got called out by a judge for having a really terrible approach to dealing with. Pulling cars over indiscriminately and randomly and without cause. Um, that was in district court, the court case was tossed, but. Um, I don't know if you guys remember the last time I was here and made public comment and talked about the cops causing problems out along E T Road. And in Trinary, well, now the other foot's starting to drop in our legal system, in our court system, that kind of stuff, so. The. Private defenders, as well as the rigid defense attorney's offices in Alder, Schoolcraft. Marquette and Delta Counties are now starting to realize that there is a considerable problem with what's happening in the report. And why the cars are getting pulled over to begin with. Which is leading to constitutional issues and a lot of additional motions that are being filed. These bad stops, because even though that they find something. Once they've pulled them over, but they don't have a constitutional reason to pull them over. Now that the defense attorneys know to look for it, they're gonna be putting motions into suppress, they're gonna be putting in. More motions, more paperwork, more problems for all of the court staffs in these four counties to pay attention to. Which is gonna be more labor and more costs than every single county. Dealing with these two issues from the Gladstone and the Goni post are are patrol. Um, I think that's a real big problem for us because if we've got delays, you've already got salaried employees. At least in Elder County that are working these cases, they're gonna be working overtime, unpaid, higher burnout. Um, and ultimately delays in Sixth Amendment protections. For all the people that are going through any case whatsoever, whether it's valid or not, whether it's a truancy hearing, whether it's. A major violent crime, whether there, you know, anything else, all these delays are gonna keep piling up. And that's gonna be a massive issue for the budget next year. When you start dealing with the courts, the prosecutor's office, digital defense. And the stuff that you guys pay attention to. So I wanted to bring this up now because I also double checked and I got the copy of the agreement. That allows the Michigan State Police to be upstairs. As talked about before, it is Michigan State Police Troopers that are within three years of coming out of the the academy that are causing a lot of these problems and doing these things. So. I looked at the rental agreement for upstairs, they don't pay a dime. I don't know how many of you guys know that or not, because yes, you can kind of share and think it's public benefit, but. Now that we're starting to see. Judge Nevel called a state trooper this last time around that impacted multiple cases because a whole bunch of other things got adjourned for the day that were related to that cop. Rahilly's already called Borman a liar. On the stand on record, so that's another factor, so him and Alonaki have already been targeted by defense attorneys for this kind of stuff. And I'm not seeing or hearing. Videotapes from stops and O W I's or pullovers being automatically included when the file and the police report go directly to. Prosecutor's Office, which means that that's more labor that our county, our county staff members have to deal with. For things that should just be included in evidentiary features. Now, to be fair to all Michigan State Police Officers, that is a, how they deal with videotapes is dealt at a state level and it comes down. That's nothing anybody local can deal with, but at least in terms of getting the, getting the files. But at least in terms of getting the, getting the files, getting the videos and and sharing them all, other kinda stuff. So there are some roadblocks that come from the state level that deal with that too. But if those are delays that are impacting. Our efficiency levels, then financially, we're gonna have to pay for it and it's gonna trickle down to us as a county. Um. I think it might be time to reevaluate some of the ways that the county. Looks at MSP. In the county courthouse. Whether, I mean, five hundred bucks a month for rent. Is six thousand dollars a year. That can help offset some of these costs and give us a little bit of extra help. I also think that ten thousand dollars that's given to upset. Should no longer be given to upset and should be focused on prosecution and uh, court costs. Because. The ninety third District Court is still having problems in Manistee. And ninety third District Court or the district. Geographically goes from shoreline to shoreline. If Manistee doesn't have a good enough court system to deal with these things and Upset's not gonna use them anyway, they're gonna come here. So we might as well work with MSP to try to get additional grants from feds, from the state. From additional task force uh, funding options. To bring money in instead of sending money out. Five hundred bucks a month for rent. And ten thousand dollars that it comes from marijuana taxes. That are no longer going out is sixteen thousand dollars saved. And if there's more grant money and everything else that can come around for it. And the saving of. For efficiency for our court systems. You could probably double that to about thirty thousand dollars a year. And I would just kinda hope that that. Gets picked up a little bit and. I'm hoping that by getting it in this month and it's far enough away from all of the, um. Budgetary procedures and meetings and subcommittee meetings that this is functional. Instead of just coming up as a surprise or looking at it as retaliatory aspect, I want, I'm hoping that, you know, we can. Avoid that aspect and. Play nice. So.
I'm all for grants. But I do gotta say. Without state police here. They cover a lot of our shifts with this in our county by being here that haven't really be coming from Marquette. By them being here and starting from here, that helps and they work, they do work well with. We don't have twenty four seven. Staff. We don't have the money to provide twenty four seven staff. Road Patrol. In a, for a county's Sheriff's Department. They pick up that slash. They work well with the county on, okay, we can, you guys have this covered, we'll cover this or vice versa. So I know how that does happen. The rest, a lot of that was done before, I think any of us, well, Mickey might have been on the board, but. That was all done before that.
And and. In fairness to the previous board and everybody else, we didn't. Have the. Statistical ability to see that we were having problems with the patrolling in the western side of the county. And so, I mean, if judges are now starting to make comments like this. And people are still having problems and. Were, you know. I know I was personally going and giving presentations about this to. To townships in the west end and as well as the road commission because of their interaction with the state police in terms of signage. Um. It's just. It's great to have road patrol. But if your community is more scared of the cops. Like they are right now with Michigan State Police a lot of times to. Calling the violent crimes or we're delaying the justice for people that. Need advocacy and and need to have closure for being the victim. Like I said, I. It's gonna be addressed. I know this is gonna be a tough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like just to touch on that, that good. So, did you meet with Lieutenant Genanzio or Lieutenant Nolan regarding the troops and the problems that are happening out out there?
Uh, Genanzio, yes, through phone calls. And so we, I sent him a copy of the uh, the presentation that we gave as well. Um, we went over through a lot of things um, in terms of. Why? Why the the stuff that Nolan Genanzio deal with in terms of the procedures. Are hitting roadblocks here in Elder County. And so with them not having formal complaints. It's hard for them to take action, which is totally fair and understandable.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, so but at the exact same time, one of the other things that can be looked at is that we have. We have students now reporting about state police officers acting inappropriately. Because they still fear the situation that happened with Minnesota Public Schools where. The superintendent abused the truancy task force to out witnesses. In a state police investigation, so that way they could punish them on the football team. Um, there was a racial incident as well. The guy doesn't wanna bring things up because he believes that he could be targeted for racial issues and. Borman himself has also made some inappropriate comments regarding female.
So like this kinda stuff, you know, I mean, if this is what's happening, this needs to go to, and I've talked to Lieutenant Genanzio and. Lieutenant Nolan. You know, regarding, you know, what's happening out there on ET Road, because I heard you at the last board meeting, I got out of here and I made a. A call to Lieutenant Nolan right away. I'm like, hey, what's going on? And he said that, you know. He knows that you had talked to Genanzio. I didn't know it was on the phone, but he said specifically, have him come to the post, set up an appointment, speak. Bring the evidence you have and bring the people forward, you know, uh, so I. You know, I have two, two boys that are state troopers and I asked them, you know, what's going on out there and. You know, I mean, uh, I don't know. So this is new to me about all that because our officers have been getting drawn with these calls regarding the state troopers, so I. I don't know.
It it it's it's rough because. The the leadership. Doesn't have the proper stuff. That's the reason why I made the comment about the videotapes. Right? Is that if there's, if there's problems with the videotapes, that comes from from higher up. By the time that it comes down, like, I mean, there's nothing that you can do at that level. From the bottom up, we're also seeing people not. Make comments according to these things and we've tried to make pushes for that, but. Without going too much into other things. When we made the Rock River Township. Presentation where the the community was most. Interactive, that was also the meeting where a whole bunch of other stuff happened afterwards and I think kinda people forgot. Um, so I've been trying to work on like how to bridge the fear, how to like get over this stuff so that way people can make those. Those complaints through the website, they can do it anonymously, they look at that kinda stuff, um. And and it's not working. I'll be completely honest, it's not working. That's the reason why I I came here today and was looking at it from a cost, cost benefit analysis is that. I mean, as the other shoe drops and it impacts our court system. Like, I mean, ever, ever since. This stuff's kinda come around, we we've seen an increase in caseload in both in digital defense and the prosecutor's office. For, you know, and they haven't received an uptick in staffing. You know, so like shifting some funds around to deal with the court side of it. Is just as. I mean, i- i- if people are not making the complaints, so that way the state police in the higher up can make the corrective decisions effectively. Then. It falls on us to make other concessions to try to make it all work and I. The last thing I wanna see and why I kinda rushed to bring this today instead of waiting for next month is because. If we start, if if you guys as the county government are getting into. Subcommittee meetings and budgetary stuff and all that kinda, all all that process and then. We find out that the budgets are shot because of extra caseloads and. Jury trials that we didn't expect with the prison, like, I mean, it's gonna be hard to kinda take that stuff around, you know, so. Informing you guys as much about how this would impact on the financial side. It's just as important if we can't fix things the right way.
I understand what you're saying, Bryce, but. And maybe I'm misunderstanding you, uh, you know, we can't predict how many jury jury trials we have. Um, how many traffic stops that we have in a shift and. So. I mean, are we supposed to, and I'll say weeks, I'm part of the law enforcement family, are we supposed to look away? So if 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 it's truly they're making um, bad stops and I'll just call it bad stops and making up something. Then that needs to be investigated. I know when the lights go on in state police car. The camera automatically goes on. So I I don't know how. If 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 the traffic stop went to trial. That camera goes to trial as well, at least in 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 all the trials I've been to involving him. I don't know, you can't hide that, I mean.
Right, so so that's where it costs money for us as a county. Is that that police report comes in. And says, this guy was pulled over because his plates didn't light up. Cause that's, that's what's going on in the motion to suppress right now. That that I know of, because the guy that got pulled over is the man that installs the the cameras into the state police cars. So. He gets pulled over, said that he. Blew a red light. Or a blue stop sign and then swerved. In the police report, it says that his plates didn't match his vehicle. Obviously, those, both things cannot be true. But. If the prosecutor's office doesn't have the video to verify that, then the charges are brought forward, the money spent on the filings, the labor spent on the filings. The delay, uh, the the total caseload for the court builds up. And then the prosecutor's gotta waste time on deals to make. You know, to make things up on the backend. Or to drop the case entirely, to not abuse other resources or to protect the rights of the person when that police report comes out. So. Even though that you're not making it to trial. You've got all of the pre-trial motions, the 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 and the time spent in the only courtroom that can handle more than eight people. For scheduling, even in cleaning and all that other kinda stuff. That. Those delays are gonna have a trickle down effect on everything else.
And those, those same cases are gonna happen whether they're in this building or in the fire hall in Christmas, the caseload's still gonna come here. So what you're saying is if they got charged something, that could help with the cost of the product prosecutors, uh. You know, uh, all trials and and and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I I mean, if if there's a way, cause you know, the other thing too is that Michigan State Police has different funding revenue sources than like. This, what the the municipalities or the counties do. I mean, there's ways where like I know there are infrastructure budgets that are included. And if you've had a chance to go to the Nagani Post lately, they've got a wonderful compound. In terms of all the stuff that are going on, but they're not spending any money, more money to make that place look any nicer. Uh, which means that some of that money might be redirected here in the form of rent payment, which can then save us some some money on the backend. Ultimately, I would prefer it if these cases and and based on what Nevel said on Wednesday. It sounds like he doesn't want those cases brought forward at all anymore because of the way that he said that the state police were.
Are we talking about one or two with the whole state police?
Three in particular. So, but. Two of them have been rotated out. So now there's just one name that pops up a lot.
And I, I know what you're talking about there.
So.
Um, I think that'll get washed out in the courts between the postman attorney and the judge. And maybe something happened with that.
Correct, and I do think that the rights of the individuals will be there, but this county board has, especially since this iteration has come together. Has made a big point of transparency, budgetary efficiency. And the efficiency of the the public to use the, uh, use the governmental agencies that this courthouse provides. And. Having better situations with that across the board does fall under the purview of this. This commercial.
And then there is a huge benefit. Of the state police being here for security purposes because of what we're dealing with today, you know, they're in the building, so. And we're next door, but a lot of times, you know, we're not next door, cause we, you know, we do an ambulance and we do rescue and whatnot. And I know they have a day car, usually two troopers down here, you know, twenty four seven for the most part, so. Um, I'm a, you know, huge supporter of them being here, you know, uh, and I know the Sheriff Brock, I'll speak for him. He was a big push for this, as Mickey knew. Uh, could use part of the old board, but uh. I mean, it sounds like they have some issues to take care of with the some troops, but I think that's, you know, you have to be taking care of with the MSP side. Uh, of things.
As I said, I think that's where the prosecutor. Prosecutor and the judge will. Take care of that.
Yeah.
As far as upset goes, the reason we started paying that is we had a terrible drug problem here in the scout. And. I think the sheriff's department would have been really overloaded. And for, I think, wouldn't pay a thousand dollars a year.
Yes, yeah, it sounds right, thank you.
And. I think they're. Getting headway on that.
Yeah, uh, so while not.
That's, that's my concern. I don't concern how many drunks they pull over, cause I don't, I don't particularly like that. You know, and I know the person you're talking about there. He's got away with that for many years.
Well, I think the reason why I brought up upset in this case is because from my understanding with the caseload that's coming through. The majority of the upset cases that are being brought forward are not for the busts that are happening with Christmas. Cause I know that we got that one and that was a big deal for sure. These are more like whenever you see a press release that says star sighting road, that means that they set up, you know, they set up a a pinch point for them on the Seamy stretch. And they're waiting to do that in Elder County. Because they like our court system and our prosecutor better than they do in Schoolcraft. You could put a pinch point at any point along Seamy Stretch. And have the same efficiency. And having the ninety third District Court go coast to coast means that the ninety third District Court as a whole. Is going to be a pinch point. I mean, the 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 ability of working with that. For grants and for extra funding, I know because of the problems that are happening in Manistee that has still not been addressed. But the magistrate down there. Does make it difficult and puts the labor responsibility on Elder County, but. If the majority of the busts that we're seeing from upset. Are not impacting our local drug problem, but are just a way to. Get the big time drug traffickers, then again, the funding sources are gonna be different. That should be money coming in. To help offset our legal costs of hosting it in our court system.
Bryce, that's that's drugs coming in towards, right, to supply all these people.
And also through. Yeah, I mean, they they say they're going to Marquette, they say they're going to Hope, they say they're going to Minnesota. Like, I mean, that's part of the 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 stuff that's brought up by upset agents when they're on the stand. I mean. I don't have a problem with with helping upset out, but like. Shouldn't the services that we provide incoming by being the guy, I mean. Robert even said it during these meetings, that he takes extreme pride that he's the prosecutor, that they give to. That they choose to bring these cases in front. It's. We should be getting money in to work on Ryan for grants or some other factor to kinda change that around. And again, ten thousand dollars is a lot. When we could be using that money. To support our neighbors that are working on our court system just as much. I'm I'm not saying to get rid of it. We're saying that as it comes in and out. There might be ways to make it more efficient. And having a nice calm. Not mean conversation and bringing this up now, so it can go properly through subcommittees is.
If you ever receive these grants, we'd like to know. That's the big part, knowing the grants are out there, where are they at?
With help, I mean, we qualify because we live on the Great Lakes, we qualify for a lot of things, you know, we use Stone Garden a lot. But there's a lot of additional grants that can happen just for drug trafficking. Um, and then there's also, we haven't seen a lot of the prosecutorial side of it either. There are grants that are specifically made for. Um, for the the legal side of things too, not just the law enforcement side of it to to separate it. And having those grants would be big, but if we've got such a caseload for a prosecutor. Um, and and only one full time staff member. In there and a victims' rights advocate that is required by her funding to not do those things. Then I don't know how. A prosecutor's office that should have probably at least a part time. Prosecutor or a specific drug prosecutor that could be split between the two counties. Um, those are. You could use that ten thousand dollars for upset and put it towards that to get the more money coming in for grants. This thought.
And I would encourage if anybody does see grants or through the, we would have qualified, email. I'll look at them.
Yeah. Thank you for your time and understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And round number twenty five.